All right. Bring us up, please. Okay, Bannock County Commissioners are now in session. First item on our agenda is Commissioners' Reports, Invoices, and Credit Applications.
I do have one invoice that we need to pay on a contingency.
Okay.
IT is extremely close on their budget and don't quite have enough money to cover that.
Who just walked in?
Adam wanted to hold it. Adam wanted to hold it and pay it next year. However, the auditors are being extremely...
Holidaying?
Yes. And if it's a September bill, they want to pay.
Okay.
So I am requesting that we can use contingency to pay that, which will just require you, all three, to sign that. And then I'll get it coded and we'll pay it next week.
Do you want this as a separate motion instead of the other things?
Yes, because it's contingency. Yes, please.
Okay. How much contingency?
$3,026.30.
Scott, was that your tractor that got repaired? Wasn't going into, it was four-wheel drive and was only going into two-wheel drive or something? Oh, there was, there was a tractor in here. It just said vehicle repair. When I looked, had Kristy look it up, it said a tractor.
We have, well, we have a couple things that are being repaired right now. So it could be the lawnmower. We have a lawnmower that's being repaired.
It was valet implement, does that help?
Okay, so yes, we do have two, two tractors, but the vehicle's actually broken.
Okay.
Okay. It just said vehicle, and so I wanted to make sure what vehicle it was. And they said it was a tractor, so.
This probably won't need to go on my tractor.
So, Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion on that contingency one first. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the presidio invoice and authorize use of contingency funds as discussed.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Can I stop that for a second? Just 'cause I have to have COVID.
We can do that. We got the golf carts purchased and the side-by-side purchased. Thank you, Scott. So we got our grinds and stuff for the Updine Event Center?
Yeah.
Okay. This is with booths, so.
Is that it?
Yes, no. This is approval for an individual to have, uh, what is it? Leave without pay?
Yes.
It's not a, a bill. Separate. But he isn't here. Have a conversation.
They know how to process.
All right.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have salary rate approval forms, and that's where we'll put this one also. Oh, there was a application for credit card, Shiloh. All right, salary rate approval forms. And we do have an old employee that's coming back in adult probation. Kind of threw me off a little bit. But he is a new employee. That is, see, that's job description. There wasn't a job description attached, but it's kind of self-explanatory. Motion within the jail. These, they need, they're the ones you had me sign for our employees.
I just want to give them to, um, to Alicia.
Okay. Yep, and that's it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have liquor licenses. At time of year.
Just in time for the holidays. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the liquor licenses as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have, uh, certificates of residency. This one is approved for the fall but denied in the spring.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the certificate of residency as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And next, we have sponsorship agreements for our facility in Downey on Fairgrounds. Townsend Realty has their names on the covered shelter. So this is an agreement for that sponsorship.
They've already paid in that one, but for now, it won't be signed by the commission. Not currently. Is it grounds related, not fair related?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the sponsorship agreement.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Scott, you're up.
Scott Crowder, Event Director, Business Manager.
Stupped at, uh, corrective secondary education school district.
So, um, we've been contacted by, uh, New Horizons High School about their graduation, holding their graduation at the amphitheater again this, uh, this coming year. Uh, they want to hold on to May 29th. And I know we've done this a handful of times, so, uh, there's the setup and take-down of chairs. Um, we are looking at a few different concerts for that weekend. So that's on Thursday, uh, currently, so, um, however, if, if it's a seated show, we would be great to have them set up and left, and if it's not, then we might need to have them taken down before they like, they leave. So that would be the only issue would be the setup and take-down of, of chairs from our side.
And in the past, we've helped take down chairs if they need to be taken down, and then we're more than happy to stack and rack them again.
How's it worked out?
Really well. It's a phenomenal, um, venue for that. The kids that are graduating from New Horizons, many of them are first-generation graduation, high school graduates and their family. And for their families to be able to come and celebrate, um, and not in a staunch graduation ceremony, but in a celebration ceremony, it's fantastic.
I have no problem. Same, same type of agreement. I mean, if we need your help, talk with Scott.
Absolutely.
He'll put you to work.
Heck, we can do that.
Other than that, I think it's a good opportunity to showcase our venue and utilize it for those youth.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
A motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the fee waiver request as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Julie.
Julie Hancock, Bannock County Elections Administrator, seeking, uh, spending of grant funds for additional e-poll books. I have that all rehearsed, but. So we're looking at getting, um, 20 additional e-poll books, especially for elections like this. Some 2023 grant funding opened up. Another set of grant funding, HAVA Grants, is opened up for 2024 also. I think with this purchase, we should be set with e-poll books. Uh, the, the grants are specific to cybersecurity. And so if there's more funding available that we're not going to use, I thought we could talk to Adam about maybe something that they need in IT also. But this particular one is a $4,900 spend and then, uh, fourteen, $30,000?
Thirty-three.
$4,900 match, and then we get the rest of this invoice that you're looking at. Well, it's a bid, actually. We would get the rest of that back.
Any questions?
She's got funds.
I have a couple. Number one, just again for the record, these e-poll books are not connected to the Internet.
They are not.
Okay. And number two, should Proposition 1 pass, how would that impact the e-poll books that we have and this purchase?
Well, I don't think it would impact the e-poll books at all, because that's just the voter database. And it's just signing people in and, and on a secure network. Well, it's not even a network, but on a secure hotspot, essentially. So if we're just using those for checking voters in and then balancing and tracking voters, that shouldn't affect what, what Prop 1 is going to affect us is in tabulation, ballot expense, and voter education.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to double-check.
Sure.
So thank you. I'm good. Don't these e-poll books talk to each other?
They do.
But they don't go through the Internet?
No, it's on a encrypted, secure network through 10x.
Hmm, okay.
Then they can't be, they can't be hacked into at all. Um, it's, it's, and I'm not very tech savvy. Adam might be able to explain it better, how that works. But they communicate with each other, but that's, that's all they communicate with. And then they ping back to our office also. But it's a secure network that they're using, so it's, nobody else can access that data that we're seeing. But the reason they talk to each other is if, if a voter turns in a mail-out ballot and then goes to the polls, and we've already checked in their ballot, within minutes, that e-poll book over here is going to say they already voted and they can't vote again. If they go to the polls and vote, and then we get their ballot in the mail, within minutes of them voting, we're going to know they did. And if we try to check in their mail-in ballot, it won't let us. It'll say they already voted.
This encrypted network isn't part of the Internet? Is it an Intranet, or what is it?
Well, it's, it's an internal, like, kind of like an internal server, where they don't need any kind of, they need a hotspot that's also password-protected and secure, that nobody else can get into, to get into like a Wi-Fi. But it's, but it's not, nobody else can access that if they're standing near one of our hotspots. They can't access that. And they can't access anything on that iPad.
Do they talk to any e-poll book in the state? Can they talk to others? Because a lot of people have these things.
Yeah.
They can only talk to your e-poll books?
They're only, they can only, it's just Bannock County.
And they don't talk to anybody at the state?
Nope.
Okay.
Once, once that information comes in, then the state can pull it from us. And that's how they collect all of their data. Once we put it into 10x, which is a secure, our secure voter database that has firewalls like crazy, then our, that, because it's a statewide database. So all that information, once the e-poll books come back to us, then all that information goes into 10x, and then the state pulls it from 10x. Not the Internet, not a website, but our secure voter database. And that's how they gather all of their statistics and data at the state level.
Okay.
Honestly, I, Commissioner, I, we would need to talk to somebody that knows way more about tech to understand exactly how that works, but.
I can explain a little bit if you need.
Please.
Let's not explain it now. Let's talk about.
The network from my Secretary of State's network.
I'm sorry?
The, the network that these equipment connect to is the Secretary of State's network, and it is separate from the Internet. Um, it uses a hotspot, so they can facilitate local traffic.
So it's an Intranet?
It's an Intranet.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the best way to describe it.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions?
I hope not.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the e-poll books and the HAVA grant funding slip match.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, Melissa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Melissa. I, I'm Melissa Hartman. I'm with Veteran Services for the county. And, um, I'm here for two reasons, so I'll start with the first one today, and that is, um, requesting a signature for using the City of Chubix, um, City Hall, uh, facility on the 17th of October for our three E's of reintegration, education, employment, and entrepreneurship. It's an opportunity for veterans and their family members to come in and find out a little bit more on how to, uh, maybe write a resume, how to use their 15 preference points that they've earned for federal employment, how that applies to other, um, job opportunities for our community. Uh, also allows them to talk to some educational options, not just to ISU, but also by having, um, the Trio Veterans Program there that can facilitate education benefits anywhere that the veteran wants to go. So that's a really great opportunity. And then we'll also be bringing in the Small Business Administration, and they'll be helping people talk about business plans, what that looks like, what kinds of services they offer online, um, so that a veteran is able to write a good, successful business plan, and then hopefully be able to access some funding for that, um, position. So it really is just an overall idea of how I help veterans readjust. There will also be the Vet Center, and, that'll be on board for counseling and therapy, because that's also a piece of the readjustment. And then also the State of Idaho, um, Idaho Division of Veteran Services, Office of Veterans Advocacy, uh, Veteran Service Officers, so my equivalents for the state. They'll be on hand also to help veterans with that readjustment process. So those are claims and, and healthcare benefits and stuff like that that we provide.
Questions?
How, how's your attendance been? Is this the first year you're doing this?
This is the first year since COVID.
Okay.
Um, I'm a little concerned, uh, mainly because we have gone to such an electronic society that a lot of the things that we're going to talk about in person, you can now find them on the Internet. So the last time we really did this, the Internet option was, um, incredibly new. You know, there wasn't indeed, there wasn't handshake. So for a veteran to be able to figure out how to apply and how to write a resume was something that they did in person. That still is necessary, but it is a lot of classes that are just videotaped on YouTube, and they can watch them at their leisure, right? So I'm concerned about what, um, attendance will look like, but I also believe that, um, it's important. So even if it's just a matter of getting veterans out there and knowing that there are services through our ads, it, it may end up being something that we only do one more time and then don't ever do again, because it's all on the Internet.
That's my question.
Hang on. Motion?
I move to approve the unauthorized signature on the rental agreement.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then my next, um, request is for a grant. We've requested this a few years back, and it kind of lasted us quite some time, so I haven't had to request it again. But I would like to request a grant for $3,000 from the Idaho Division of Veteran Services, Veteran Support Fund. That will help us provide the necessary documents for that education series that we do through our office. So that education series, um, consists of the three E's of readjustment that we talked about just now. Uh, it, it is going to encompass a resource fair. And this one, I think, is going to be really, um, kind of accessible more or have more people come into it, because it's going to be geared towards our older veterans a little bit more and about the PACT Act, where we'll have more presenters, so people can come and hear live questions, more like a town hall versus a, um, just a bunch of people in a, in a room with tables, you know, that you can do on the Google instead, right? So I think we'll see more resources from there or more attendance there. Um, there's a financial fitness class and home buyers workshop. Workshops have been very successful, because people come prepared to do, uh, have an outcome, right? They come to have an action. So they bring their job descriptions and, or not their job descriptions, I'm sorry. They'll bring their, uh, credit report, and there will be people there and advisors there to help them, um, focus on what will improve their credit score, ultimately to be able to access their VA home loans for homebuyership. The estate planning workshop, which was hugely successful. I probably could have used a much bigger space than we had at the Memorial Building. But we were limited by, for attendance based off of the pro-bono attorneys that we had. But that was a, that was hugely successful, so we'll continue to do that. And then we did the mental health awareness outreach. It really doesn't cost any money, but it's part of our education series. It needs work. The attendance of it was incredibly low. We'll be working on maybe how we can, you know, it's kind of hard to talk to people to come on in and just talk about your mental health. So there might have to be some changes and adaptations to that to make it more successful next year. But we'll always do that the third, uh, week of September. So we're planning on that. There wasn't a lot of cost associated with that. Honestly, the most cost is going to come from the, the workshops, because we actually create a workbook. So the financial fitness and the estate planning workshop, that's where our real costs come from. These, these events are going to occur throughout fiscal year '25. This is a, a grant that you guys have signed previously for just the calendar year, but we, when we submitted it, the State of Idaho was out of money and their funding cycle restarted in July. So they requested that I change the dates and the events, or, or change my dates around and resubmit. So that's why you're seeing a little bit of a change, but it's the same thing.
And we called it, while they kind of call it a grant, it's really not a grant. It's funding that we have available that they just sent to us. We'll receive it into the Veterans Trust, and that's how Melissa will spend the funds.
Okay.
There's really no, per se, recording requirements. They just want to ensure that it's being used for this appropriate purchase, so.
Okay.
For these purchases. So that's why you don't see an intent to apply for them and the non-grant process paperwork.
So there's no match, no?
No.
It's just money that's available.
Right. So my understanding of this fund is that, um, the veterans home make money by the nature of what they are. That money, they can't make money, so it goes into a fund. And so that fund is what, where that money comes from. And they try to distribute that throughout the State of Idaho, so that veterans, um, can actually have some, uh, more benefits and be able to access that. So this is a really good fit for us. And the State of Idaho, or in Southeast Idaho, there aren't many of these grants issued. Uh, the, the fair booth that we, um, hosted, that is actually funded through this grant process. And then what we do for education throughout the area. We, of course, give priority to Bannock County veterans, but if there's space available, you know, for that, or accessible, we certainly don't turn anybody away.
Questions?
No, I think it was a great program.
Motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve, uh, the grant request as presented. And I'm, right, Chair, signature.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Adam.
Good morning. Adam McKinnon, Chief Technical Officer, here under the auspices of 911 Communications this morning. I have two items. First is, um, we had an MOU signed with Alert West and Idaho Power about two weeks ago. Uh, they added, uh, two things to that MOU, uh, on a request. One is they'd like to do two cameras rather than one, in order to not use our existing camera, which we'd offered for them to use. But they're going to put two there instead of one. And then the other thing is that they want to make sure that anybody who has access to the system is okay with their privacy policy, which is their blanket, uh, terms of service. So, uh, they added those two things, and I just came back to get another signature on the same MOU again.
Questions?
No, I read through this.
Motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the MOU as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the second issue, uh, item is our signature on an acceptance for our Idaho Public Safety Communications Commission Fiscal Year '25 Grant Cycle. We were awarded 1.05 million, um, with no match. That is for upgrading our Vesta system. And it also funds, uh, Vesta system upgrades for Power County, uh, Bingham County, and it will bring on Bear Lake County over the next two years onto our Vesta system. So we are only one county away from having the whole digby on our system. It's really, really good. So that, that one is one I need a, a wet ink signature to return to them directly, um, on the letter. But, yep, that's it.
When I was reading this, I didn't know if I should stand and applaud for you when you got this.
I jumped up and down. I was still in the meeting, and I sent people like a, ah! We were excited. As the IPSCC, we're, you know, the, the group is rearranging the way that these grants work with the idea that the legislation might change, uh, and bring more money in. And I wanted to go after this grant before that happened, just in case the money goes the other direction. And we're anticipating it's going to go up. And we're going to fund, uh, you know, as an IPSCC, an EZNet for the whole state. We're already on that, and all of our counties that are connected to us are. Um, but we're trying to do that for the whole state. So I, I was really, wanted to go after this, and I'm glad we got it, because it, it worked out well, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I cheered as well when I got your.
I, I was, yeah! That's good, good money.
Yep. Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the grant acceptance for the grant as discussed.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to mention the Edward Byrne?
I'm going to bring it up. Do you want to hang up for a minute?
Yeah.
Or you can up on my part?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Charity.
Good morning, Commissioners. Charity Stagg, Southeast Idaho Council of Governments. Here presenting the Bureau of Land Management Good Neighbor Authority Grant Award that's managed through the Office of Emergency Management for approval. There's nothing to sign for this one. The funder considers any drawdown of funds as an approval of that, which is why we're bringing it forward as at least get a motion, substantial approval of some kind.
Any questions?
No, I would like to say how important this Good Neighbor Authority is, because there are certain areas in Idaho that have struggled to get this. And a lot of the fires that have taken place recently have been because they haven't been able to do things like this in their areas. And so this is a really big deal, uh, that a lot of areas don't have. And so I, this is fantastic. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the Good Neighbor Authority as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shanda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shanda Crystal, Chief Workroom Officer. I have a few items before the board today. The first one I would like to start with is a contract for the Annex Fire Suppression Project. If you'll recall, we went out to bid for this project and received no bids back in. Dan then went, um, looking for a contractor that would be available and that would be within budget. Uh, we have found one in Legacy Fire Protection. And, um, this contract has been reviewed by legal. And we, I would like to ask for signatures on a contract with Legacy Fire Protection for $37,385, um, to complete the fire suppression project over at the Annex.
Questions? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the contract with Legacy Fire Protection as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next item I have before the board is a contract, um, for the Annex project again, um, for the HVAC portion of it. Uh, again, we went out to bid and received no bids back in for this project. Again, Dan was able to find a contractor that had room in his schedule. Again, Dan was able to find a contractor that had room in his schedule and was able to supply an estimate for us that is attached. I would like to ask for signature on a contract with Vex Heating and Air Conditioning for $294,650 to complete the HVAC project at the Annex.
And all these are coming in under what we had?
Under budget, yeah. Yeah, these two, yeah.
So appreciate that.
I believe when, this is the last of the contracts for the Annex barring the contingency that's there. I think Christie can review, but I think we're under for the project as a whole. That does not include the storefront. If you'll recall, we've struck out a couple of times getting a contractor to do that. The most recent is CM Company that we've asked to give us an estimate and we're just waiting to hear back on what that cost might be before bringing it back before the board.
Motion?
Ms. Chair, I'd move that we approve the contract with Vex Heating and Air as presented.
Have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And again, that does complete the contractors for the Annex project and I do believe they are ready to go. I think they'll start that project next week as the different things come in line and roll forward on that. So we're excited. The next item I have before the board is requesting a signature on a change order with CM Company in regards to the Sixth Street renovation. If you recall, we were just kind of uncertain of what that change order process might look like, so as they submitted it, I talked to Christie about this to make sure that it would meet all of her reporting requirements. And upon review, it's going to meet all of our requirements. Just to understand the process a little more, as CM Company comes into something that was unforeseen as part of the contract, they will submit a change order. That change order will then be submitted to our architect, Ted Booth, for review and comment. If they approve that that is in line with the change order, then they'll submit it back to me for payment. That is then turned over for Christie for coding and then it's now back before the board for signature and approval.
We need to have commission approval before it's submitted for payment, right?
Yes, yes, yes. Right, so then.
I was correcting what you said correctly.
Sorry. So like once Ted gives me approval, right, I turn it over to you for, oh, this is the first one. I didn't do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're good.
Okay. So everyone from here on now, understanding the process will be similar to other ARPA invoices, right, that go to you for coding, to the commission for signature and then back to auditing for payment?
Yes, I think we need to confirm funds because if, if we're out of ARPA money, we'll have to identify funds.
Where's it going to go?
So I think we'll have the board approve it and then upon approval, then we'll, we'll work through the coding and authorizing part.
Because now I just, so I need to double check with Garrett. So I believe that this will just add to their invoice, but then when they do their.
But it'll be the next payment.
Yes.
Yes.
So I think we'll have a little bit of space in between, yeah, signing the change order and requesting the payment.
Yes.
Okay, okay. But we'll get that piece.
All right.
You're right, this is the first one for this, so.
I didn't have a lot today.
But I've liked CM's, I mean, CM, they've been pretty good to work with. Have you had any concerns?
I have not worked with them, other than through Shanda. Everything's been smooth on our side.
Right?
Well, with the other thing that we had out at the jail, it's just good to have a company that is putting our bills out there right up front and I know we're having good communication. That's what I'm saying, I guess.
And we are looking at capitalizing versus non-capitalizing things that we haven't quite worked out, but we will get whatever Christie needs just as quickly as we can on that portion.
Motion for CM?
Ms. Chair, I move that we approve the CM Company change order.
You have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next item I have before the board is a recommendation to award the Winter Road Salt Invitation for bid. We went out for bid a couple of weeks ago on that. We did receive two responses back in. Upon review of those two responses, we would like to recommend to award the invitation to bid for Delivered Winter Road Salt to Compass Minerals America for $47.20 per ton.
And I did have a conversation with Kyle on this one and for them to haul it and the manpower and the equipment is, it'd put a great strain on them as they're trying to finish up everything they can before winter hits. And so it's his desire to go this direction.
We did have a brief conversation about looking more for a transport company that could then alleviate, right, his guys would still be able to do the fall projects as designed, but then understanding a little more about scheduling and cost for transport companies that might be available because there was quite a cost difference in between delivered and not, but then understanding what we might be able to get delivery for. So that's something we're going to look at for next year, too.
And it was Compass?
Compass Minerals America.
Okay. Ms. Chair, I move that we approve the bid for Compass Minerals America in the amount of $47.20 per tonne for salt. Any questions?
Have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I do have a board letters present, are prepared for you. And the last item I have before the board today is a procurement update. It will start at the top of the dashboard. We're starting to do a couple more of the contractors down for the fairgrounds in regards to the other, now that the steel shell is out for bid. We started with the ceiling and HVAC. I already have comments back from Dan on one of those, so those are moving right along. But there's a few more that I'll go ahead and draft in the next couple of weeks, plumbing, electrical, fire suppression. Those will all be ones that are coming, but those will be the next ones that you'll see rolling through there. As Commissioner Moser mentioned earlier, we did receive drawings for the YDC events in our office. We're excited for that project. I already at 8:03 this morning had a contractor reach out to me and ask for those plans, so we're excited for that. We have noticed the last pre-bid that we did for the steel shell down in Downey, the contractor seemed very excited to have a winter project, something that they could start planning and working through the winter and then something that the moment the spring breaks that their guys can get going on. So we're hoping for the same effect here with the YDC building as well. But that bid went live today. It'll be published again next Friday on October 4th and we'll move forward with a pre-bid on that one up at the event center so they can see the space as well. If you'll jump down to the two bids we have live, the first for the Sheriff's Office Tactical Training Remodel, that one has been published twice and we held a pre-bid on it. Oh, sorry, no. It has been published twice. The pre-bid is scheduled for next Tuesday, Octo, sorry, two weeks. I'm losing track of days. October 8th is when that pre-bid is scheduled for. And again, we have quite a few contractors that have reached out on that, so I do feel that that's going to be a successful winter project as well.
On which one is this?
That's the tactical training remodel for the Sheriff's Office. Also out at the jail, the asphalt repair. We did hel, hold a pre-bid meeting on that. We had four different contractors attend and we had a few questions submitted on that as well and we issued an addendum on that yesterday. Those bids are due back in on October 7th is when they're due, so the contractors have just a little bit. In regards to the fairgrounds, I mentioned the steel shell building. We did hold a pre-bid on that. We had three contractors attend and we have another one that submitted questions on that, so we've got a few that are interested. We have received quite a few questions on that. I am, would like to pause and just give my thanks to Hal and Dan and Brian. When those questions come in, I often need help identifying exactly how we need to respond, best to respond to that. I was grateful that all three of those gentlemen paused their already hectic schedules to help me respond to those questions and get it back out in a timely manner. So I'm grateful for their help. But that addendum will be issued today for that project and that one is also due, the bids are due on October the 7th, so same time as the asphalt repair. The last one, I was excited that, in regards to the Lava Ranches Fuel Reduction Contractor, Charity has got the approval for that extension and she has chased down signatures on the contract and so I'm grateful to say they'll come back before the board for a requested signature next week for that and they should be able to get that project moving.
So we have two and a half months to have everybody under contract for ARPA. How are we, how are you doing? How is things going?
I am so grateful for the support that I have from Christie's office, from Legal, from Dan, from all of the departments that have those ARPA projects. It is critical. I could not do the little piece of my puzzle that I do without them and so I appreciate working with great people. We have, that was the final drawing that we were waiting for, was YDC. So there'll be little bits here and there, right, as addendum as those questions come out, so we're not done with that partnership by any means, but that's the last big piece of that puzzle that we were waiting for. There are a couple of things as the next bids come in on October 7th that then we will need to talk with the board about how we would best like to proceed. And I have asked, I'm hoping for that second week in October to have a better idea of the completed project down in Downey, what that might cost. So then again, we might be able to look at that funding and make sure that's.
What's the date on our last bid for one of them projects to be in?
To start, to be, oh.
To be completed so that we know that we have a contractor.
So I have started on pre-bid meetings explaining, being more specific to contractors, that we are under deadline as far as how quickly they get their information back to us and that there will be on these next couple of ones, there will be a dropped end. If you do not have your paperwork back here, we will go to the next bidder. We can't, there is no room to mess around. So if contractors widely didn't have to have, like let's say a public works license to bid on the project, but they do have to have it to be awarded, so there will be a definitely communication between us and those vendors that say that this is the last, you have to have all of your documentation to us by this date. If not, we're moving to number two. But I'll come back to the board and explain once I've got that. Our preferred schedule is to have the last day to issue a bid being October 16th. So again, why I want to check just that week before with the board and make sure that we've got funding for all of our projects. Let's see if there's any more, the barns at the fairgrounds for the 500,000, right, that's still kind of hanging as the other ones come back in, so there'll need to be a decision made on that one. But that's kind of, we do have another date that's like an absolute, the tightest bid I can absolutely run, but we would prefer the last bid be issued on October 16th. But we are coming up on those deadlines to have those final decisions made and move forward with those projects.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next discussion is with Enterprise.
Yes, sir. So as we move forward in requesting release of those titles for the leased, 20 leased vehicles we have through Enterprise, as the bill of sale was submitted to me, it was submitted with a dollar amount attached to it. That was surprising to me and so then I asked for additional clarification. The one that you have before you in the packet is a little different than the numbers that I'll talk about, but, so they're saying these additional funds fees are for the title service fee of $375 per vehicle to process the title for Bannock County. And plus a $1 remaining that they left on each account to keep them open and active. I did feel this was an error. I did ask they go back and remove those fees. That's why those ones in front of you are a little different than what I'm talking about. They did say that they would reduce any fee listed on there to be the 376, the 375 plus $1 per vehicle for a total of $7,520 for the 20 vehicles, but that is what they were willing to do for me. So today I am here to ask for a discussion in regards to paying the title service fee and the $1 remaining on the account and requesting a signature when the documents are ready. Again, right, these ones in front of you are not correct and I also need to add a room number to the bill of sale to make sure it goes to auditing, but that is.
They had a booth in Boise last week, which I attended more than once and had quite a discussion with the people that were there. This guy that's over the finance was supposed to be there and I never did get a chance to meet him. I don't think he showed up after, because he canceled his meeting here 30 minutes after I cussed him out there. So I don't know if that had anything to do with it or not, but anyway, sold $7,500 basically. Ryan?
Just a quick question. Historically, have they had that when we've paid off leases and have they had this title transfer fee?
We've never had this issue arise, no. We paid off the sheriff, did not have this issue. This is specific to Enterprise and their.
We have had them sell other vehicles for us, vehicles that Bannock County owned, and we have paid the 375. But that was for, they came and they picked up the vehicle, they delivered it to whatever location was best to sell that vehicle, they paid the auction cost for that vehicle. To me, that's where the 375 was going. So this is a different situation that we have not come across before.
And we've, we've had multiple conversations with them. So we're at the point now that we either go court or, and what would that, would that cost, the $7,500?
Can we talk about that in executive session?
This is not, this is not at this time.
But.
Do we, do we have to make a decision on this today?
We'd just like to pay them off if we're going to or before next week with the budget.
Well, the last day for me to process claims, I'd have to have this by next Thursday.
Next Thursday?
Yeah, is the cutoff to pay anything out of FY '24.
So we could talk about it in the executive session on Tuesday, but.
Brian, what's your thoughts?
I mean, anything is going to be contract based, right, whether it's verbal or in writing, but I feel it'd be a good idea if we're going to discuss more about options to do that in an executive session than here today.
Okay, let's go ahead and put this on our agenda for Tuesday with an executive session. Would be okay with that? All right, Todd?
Todd Mager with Juvenile Justice, Bannock County Juvenile Justice. I'm here today regarding the grant award for the Restorative Justice Grant from the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections in the amount of $28,502.84. Accepting this grant would allow us to do a restorative practice training for 30 individuals and then bring the Institute of, International Institute for Restorative Practices in for two training sessions that would allow us to get 10 trainers in our community trained in restorative practices. Currently, I'm the only restorative practice trainer for our department, so I think it would benefit us for the longevity of using these restorative justice practices in juvenile justice. So I also need to like throw a shout out to Matthew Phillips and Christie Dabumport and Brian Trammell. This is a federal grant and so there was a little bit of, there was a different civil rights pages and information that was needed and so we weren't 100% sure who was responsible to sign the civil rights contract and get that information together. It was information that I did not know and so if you turn to page four, Matthew Phillips assisted with that and has got it signed out, filled out and has the information that's needed to be submitted with the grant. I was grateful for his quick turnaround on that as I was not, this is some federal money that's come down, I believe, from the Department of Justice to the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections and so it was a little bit different, but I am seeking signature. You guys would be the. You guys would be the authorized officials, and then I would be the project manual, and Jason Dixon, I believe, would be the financial director, so.
Jason's not in today, but Carrie should be down there.
So I, I, this was supposed to be on October 1st, but when they sent out that civil rights form, they didn't themselves have the right information on the, the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections didn't have the right information on the website, so they've granted me till October 4th, so I can follow up with Jason if he'll be in on Monday and kind of get everything together, if approved, and get everything signed and sent off.
Is there a match on this?
There is no match, no.
Other questions? Motion?
Ms. Chadmore, we approve the restorative justice grant.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you want it now? Christie?
What's the best way to do that? If we make a touch basically Monday?
So I'll just put it in the pile, and Jason, you'll get Jason to sign it?
Well, I'll come sign it off on it, and then you can get a copy and then get it sent off Monday. Thank you, appreciate all your efforts.
Dylan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dylan Evans, landfill manager. Do you want to do the CDM Smith one first?
It's fine.
Perfect. Looking to do Task Order 13, get a signature from you guys. We took a little bit of a different approach this year. Going to take time to kind of get some of the deliverables to DEQ through our consent order, hopefully situated, knocked out, sent to them. We're still waiting, they've been a little bit slow reviewing some of our documents that we've sent off to them. There is some money for some grant writing I talked to Christie about. The Fort Hall Canyon Creek infiltrates into Cell 1, so that's one of the projects that they really wanted to focus on, come up with a solution for, and they think that there's going to be monies in there for natural waterways to repair the creek. They think that some of that grant funding would pay for that, some of that remediation stuff that there could be costs to, so there's a little bit of money in there.
So if we choose to go down that path, then that's what we would pay, but the reason we talked about having them do it is because it's going to be a lot more technical of a grant writing that might be outside the scope of what we could provide. So we just wanted to have it in there as an option. That doesn't necessarily mean we would do it, depending on what the paperwork looks like, but it would allow that ability because it would be technical.
They're going to write the grant?
Potentially.
Questions?
No, Dylan and I went over this last week, and there's some potential money savings in there with some things, so-
Yeah.
This is a worst-case scenario, and like Christie just said, if we end up writing some of that grant, then that grant writing number would go down, things like that, so while I don't like this one, it's one we gotta do.
They do a really good job, man, they, they sure are great to work with, but they come with a little bit of a tag, too.
And just because these are all listed, doesn't mean we will take advantage of them.
Correct.
Okay, motion?
Ms. Chadmore, that we approve the CDM work requisition number 13.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and then next, we have the generator on-call and the operator shift differential. I don't know if you guys have any questions, if you had a second to read. Pretty straightforward, like we talked about before. Tried to keep it streamlined to where it wasn't so clunky that we couldn't use it. Worked with Matthew and auditing on this one. Matthew has some concerns, maybe on the backend, we need to do a little bit more work on, nothing too crazy, but just some minor tweaks on the backend, on the payroll side of things, to make sure everything was totally correct, but wanted to get it before you guys, before the, we're supposed to start, or-
This is all within the bounds of the budget that we set.
The only thing different is he's going to start before fiscal year ends, because this year, because of the extra pay period, we are officially starting new fiscal year until October 5th, October 6th for landfill. So they're going to pay a little bit out of FY '24's budget with some line item, a budget monies that they have remaining. But then it starts October 1st, which is normal, except this year.
Comments, questions? Motion?
Ms. Chadmore, move that we approve the shift differential request as presented.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't leave yet, I have a question.
Okay.
Oh, he's got another. Oh, that's, yeah, he's got one more.
The-
Employee leave?
Yeah, it, it was just kind of a weird deal, so with our rotating schedule, his week was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and he ended up having some car troubles and wasn't able to make it to work on Friday and Saturday. So we talked to him about that, and I actually met with Matthew about it, and we're going to go through a coaching session and some things like that, and reviewed the policies, and so hopefully it never happens again. And being that it was the end of his week, we didn't have the option of saying, no, you need to come in tomorrow and do a half-day to finish out your hours.
Questions?
No, I talked to Dylan about it, I understand what happened.
Jeff, you're, you're good with this?
Yeah, he's had a pretty good discussion with the employee, worked very closely with Matthew on how to make this work, and so.
And this is the elected official's the only one that can grant leave without pay?
I'm sorry?
The elected official's the only one that can grant leave without pay, that's why this is before you.
Motion?
Ms. Chadmore, that we approve this leave without pay as presented.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Quick question, last year, there was a bill presented in the House about solid waste disposal and allowing, what was it, a private company to direct where some of the solid waste went. Were you aware of that by any chance?
I'm not.
I haven't heard about it either, but we talked about it at IAC this last week, and we presented a resolution to fight against that bill, because there's word that it's going to come up again this year. And so I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and I'll forward you this information, so you can see it. But it would take away some of our control over solid waste in the county, but still leave us responsible for all of the solid waste in the county. It's kind of a weird-
Yeah.
Weird thing, and it came out of Twin Falls areas where they're the ones that brought this to our attention, so.
But the intent of, like, salvaging materials, or?
No, it would, and I, I listened to it, but I got confused, so I'm not real clear, but it was the, the private entity would be able to direct where the solid waste would go.
They would actually contract and, and end up be, being paid to take care of solid waste, but the overall responsibility still, by state statute, is under the county. And so if they don't follow all the rules-
We have to pick-
The responsibility ends up on the county, in the county's responsibility. And, and then the other part that the counties are worried about, they're paying all this money to have the landfill and have it lined and all this stuff, and then they have a contractor come in and put it, pick a different site, and start hauling off waste, and then they can't, don't have the- Waste coming to their facility, and so then they, they're not getting an income to, you know, pay for-
Any remediation might have to occur.
What they have. And that's, that, there's a couple of spots in the county, in the state that have been talking and negotiating, whether it's cities or whatever, talking with people, and so basically the Idaho Association of Counties and stuff would say, no, this is under the direction, I mean, we're ultimately responsible for it, it's under the direction of the counties.
Interesting.
You can't come in and undercut us.
Yeah, so I'll forward you this information, but I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that potentially could be something that we have to get involved in this year, trying to fight against, should that bill come up again.
Send her over. Awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you. President, come on up. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. It is a pleasure to be here.
You may be the highlight of our day.
It's the highlight of mine, it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. Go ahead and introduce yourself, just for the record.
Sure, so I am Robert Wagner, President of Idaho State University, and I'm very pleased to be here this morning.
Thank you.
Is there any questions that you have? I'd love to be able to give an update on things that have been happening at Idaho State the last couple of weeks as well, whatever you would like.
We'd, we'd love to hear, I mean, there's a lot of construction that's gone on and-
Sure.
And everything's gone on.
What's enrollment doing?
Sure, sure. So I'll just speak, we've had an exciting, we just came off a very exciting two weeks at Idaho State. It started off with our Celebration Week, which traditionally we have done, but we combined it altogether into one week. It started out with a faculty and staff lunch, where we served our outstanding faculty and staff on that Monday. We did floats for our students on Tuesday. We did a Bengal giveaway for our faculty and staff, if they wore Bengal gear on Bengal Wednesday. On Thursday, we did a faculty panel. Thursday evening, we also did, no, Wednesday evening, we did service at the Portniv Wellness Complex, that was very successful. And then we ended the week with my inaugural address on Friday, which, which, which was a really fun event, not to listen to me speak for 30 minutes, but we had, we had our choir sing the Alma Mater in that event. We had the high school dance troupe from the Choban Tribes came and performed, that was beautiful, and just lots of engagement with our faculty, students, and staff. And if that was not busy enough, we then moved right into Homecoming Week. And last week was homecoming, and a little earlier than what we traditionally had, homecoming, the good news is the weather was beautiful, and we had a number of homecoming events. The students have activities all throughout the week, including a bon, including a bonfire we had in the ICC Udon parking lot. It's the first opportunity I had to attend that, and I got to be one of the, the people who lit the bonfire, and that was fun. But it's really-
I only have a burn ban on.
Right, yeah, yeah, it was, it was, the good news is Pocatello Fire Department was on-site, and right, 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 right there, and we followed their lead. But it, it, it was a lot of fun, and then we had our alumni banquet Friday evening, and then just an outstanding tailgate and football game on Saturday against Southern Utah. The team played very, very well. So two weeks, just a really, really exciting time. I forgot about the parade, I should mention the parade. The parade was, it was my first homecoming parade, and it did not disappoint. We had a few injuries, which we're looking in to, but other than that, I've been told record attendance for the parade, over 160 floats, participants in the parade, which is the most we've ever had, and it was just, the weather was, couldn't have been better, was just absolutely beautiful. So two very, very exciting weeks at Idaho State University, a chance to really celebrate and engage with the community. I really was excited about the community support and the, and the engagement. As far as enrollments, this, so fall, I'm very pleased to say, we should have a press statement that should go out in the next week, but this is the third straight fall semester that we have enrollment growth, which is excellent. And I credit that to my predecessor, President Satterley, and the administration. These fall enrollments, I'd like to say, those were already in, in, in the works when I started in January. Recruiting, believe it or not, begins a year before. So this fall, we're actually just starting recruiting season for fall of '25. But this fall, we're up by over 300 new undergraduate students, which is excellent for us. We're slightly up in graduate students, but we're seeing good numbers. Now with that comes some challenges. We're at 99% capacity with our residence halls and beds. Typically, what happens is your, you get very, very high, high residency rates, and then through the first, for first week, that usually drops, just through attrition, and students change their mind, and it usually pops down into the 80s. Well, we only popped down to 99%, so we know we have a need. There is a tremendous need for housing, and so we are going to address that, that's part of our, I'm sure you've heard of the campus master plan that we've been involved in, that we'll be finishing up the end of this fall. And we know that housing's a critical need for our students, something that we need to address on our campus, and something that we're eager for our community partners to address as well. So enrollments are very good, we are just, just excited about that. Last night, I attended the ribbon cutting of our brand-new, of our newest Bengal pharmacy, which opened in Chubak, and was very, very excited to do that. These are pharmacies that we locate specifically in rural areas of the state. The pharmacy in Chubak, one of the reasons why it's there is to not just to serve the community, but it's actually the hub of the different rural pharmacies that we've established out across the state. The Chubak Pharmacy, in fact, you walk in and they have videos of all of the rural farm, all of the rural Bengal pharmacies, and they're able to manage and administer those farm, those pharmacies from the hub that's in Chubak. So really excited that, that, that just opened last night with the ribbon cutting. We also last eve, last evening, had a faith leader summit at our institution, where we invited faith leaders of all denominations who have students as part of their congregations to come to, to the Alumni Center, and we held a, a, a meeting with them, where we talked with them about the services as an institution that we provide, so that they're aware of those services. As they serve their congregants, who are students, we want them to be aware of the things that we do as an institution. It's another way, for me, that's important, that we partner with our community, and that we make sure that we serve our students. When we partner and work together, our students win, and the community wins, and Idaho State University wins. In my inaugural address, I announced areas of, of, of emphasis. I've spent the last five months doing a listening session called Bold Path Forward, where I've listened to faculty, students, and staff. I've engaged with, with offices in different divisions and asked specific questions related to where have we been, where are we now, where do we want to go, what opportunities are available, what are the challenges that we have. We've collected all of that information for five months, and my leadership team then curated that information, and we brought it all together into a series of strategic actions, of, of, strategic actions and areas of focus that we're going to take over the next year. The first is strategic enrollment growth. We will grow in a sustainable way. We can't grow double-digit increases, as I just said earlier, we don't have the bed space to grow, but our other campuses do. So we will grow with our enrollments, but we'll do it in a very strategic and a, a very viable way. The second is an academic and research focus will be, I'm a firm believer in the research enterprise, and how we serve the state, and how research impacts economic development. So we will continue to grow our research enterprise. And on the academic program side, we're going to be very specific with the programs that we focus on, to make sure that we're meeting the local community needs and industry needs. We'll focus, for example, on the health sciences mission. We are the health science institution of the state, and we'll continue, we'll continue to grow those programs. Another area of emphasis will be infrastructure. We have tremendous needs. There are a number of infrastructure projects that we have, both on this campus, as well as, as well as Idaho Falls, as well as 23 acres on our, on our, on our Meridian campus. For our Pocatello campus, I will say, the number one priority with us for infrastructure right now, I'll be presenting before the- I'll be presenting before the Public Building Board in Boise next week. Our number one priority is a Life Sciences building. 70% of our students go through our Life Science, Life Science classes. Being the health education, health sciences leader in the state, a Life Sciences building is critical. Our, our, our current Life Sciences building cannot be, cannot even be renovated. It is in such a critical shape. Part of that building is not even able to run hot water. And so we will be presenting to the board next week that that's our number one priority. We'll be seeking, seeking state support to help with that project. Will also be, it'll be a three-pronged approach. We're hoping to get state support. We will do philanthropic support, where we'll be looking for a naming gift for the building. And then the third is we will use our A1 bond, bond capacity to be able to bond. And then when we launch our comprehensive capital fundraising campaign in 2026, the plan will be to pay that bond back in a quicker fashion than what will be originally de, de, since outside. My goal, I would hope, would be to break ground by next fall for a new Life Sciences building. It's such a critical building for us. But lab space, it will be a very detailed and delicate building to build that will most likely take two to two and a half years to build. So, so in infrastructure, we're going to partner. We just had a press release, a press event in Twin Falls with my colleague, President Dean Fisher at the College of Southern Idaho on Monday of this week, where we signed an MOU talking about how ISU is going to have a stronger and bigger presence in Magic Valley to serve and to partner with CSI. So we're going to do that all over the state. When we partner, when we work together, good things happen. And then the last action strategy and, and, and area is really, for me, one of the most important, and that's we need to take care of our people. We need to take care of our faculty and staff specifically. We need to make sure that we retain them, that our sal, that our salaries are equitable, that we're reading, really meeting the needs of the people who are dedicating their time and effort to this great institution. So those are the areas that I announced in my inaugural dress that I'll be focusing on and working with the institution over the next year. I've laid out a lot to you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So taking care of your staff and people, how's your turnover?
We are struggling, just like, just like many are in our community and in the estate. We are struggling. We're struggling to keep our salaries up, keep our salaries competitive, especially with our staff. It's a challenge. And I know that there are companies, there are industries in our community here that are struggling with the same thing. So we, we need to focus on, and as a state entity, that's a challenge for us because we rely on the legislature to give us the funds that we need in order to be able to prove, provide annual increases, for example. And so the fact that we're still working on the budget deficit means that, you know, we, we, we are going to really rely on the state led, the state legislature to get that help. I will mention the deficit really quickly. What started out as $15 million is now down to $6 million, and we should have that deficit wiped out early by the end. We hope by the end of this fiscal year, that deficit should be wiped out.
Question on, are those people that you make an offer to and they say, no, we're not going to, do you hear anything consistently that is, other than salary, that is prohibiting them from coming and accepting?
It is mostly, it is, it is very high percentage is salary. Some housing. I would say the second reason is probably housing, being able to find affordable housing, if we're hiring them from out of state or out of the community. I would definitely say that housing is the second. But the first, by and large, by a high percentage, is competitive salary.
We just spent a few days in Boise and talked with the counties, and a lot of them, everybody's having problems.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just, it's, it's a real challenge. And I want to give credit to our incredible faculty and staff. You know, we have, my predecessor launched a budget optimization process to begin addressing the budget deficit. That's involved everyone. And our faculty and staff have worked very, very hard. They've sacrificed. We've had positions that we've chosen not to fill in order to realize salary savings to be able to help with the deficit itself. It's been a team approach. And it's hard to ask them to do more and, and to ask them be so engaged and then not be able to provide a good salary and a good wage. And so that's why it's one of my five priorities to see what we can do to really help and focus on our people. They're our greatest resource. They're the greatest asset that we have. So many of them are dedicated to Idaho State, dedicated to the mission that we have. We need to be able to do more for them.
In regards to enrollment being up, how much would you say the launch, the governor's launch program has impacted that?
Big, big. In fact, any chance I have in meeting with legislators, I'm talking about and in favor in promoting the launch program. The last number I saw is we have over 800 students currently at Idaho State University who are on the launch program. That's an incredible number for us. And considering, you may have heard the challenges with federal student aid. This last year, it was a mess. The Department of Education released a new FAFSA form, the application for student aid, and it was just, the implementation of that was a nightmare. And it caused a number of delays and problems for students and their families in getting federal aid. It also changed the rules that unfortunately are going to negatively impact some of our more rural students in what counts as assets and, and the types of federal aid that they can qualify for. Launch came at just the right time. Because Launch was there, I am convinced that many of those 800 students came because Launch was there when the federal aid that typically is there was not there or was late in getting there. So Launch has been really important. As you know, Launch is focused on job readiness, workforce development, and high-demand jobs. Idaho State University, of all the institutions in the state, we have the highest number of academic programs that qualify for Launch because we offer everything from tech certificates clear up through research PhDs. Now Launch is focused on certificates and undergraduate degrees, but we still have the highest number of qualified programs for Launch. So I am a, a very staunch supporter of Launch, and I think it made a tremendous impact on our enrollments and on the ability of our students. I just did a tour of our Eames building and our College of Technology, our automotive programs, our welding programs. That place is bustling up there, which is exciting because I know there are companies in this community that need those, need that workforce, and it's hopping up there. If you have an opportunity, I'd love to be able to take you on a tour. If it's been a while for you to go up and tour the Eames complex, the incredible work that's being done. Those are students that are coming in in six months to a year, leaving with incredible work, training, certificates that are leading right into the workforce.
I'm on the Workforce Development Council, and so I hadn't heard the numbers for ISU, so that's why I was curious.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Those are good numbers.
It's a great number for us. And that went up, the first week of the semester, we were still in the 500 range, and now we're in the 800 range for Launch recipients. And again, if you, you walk through the Eames complex, that place is hopping and so exciting. And a lot of our, our students that are focused on the health professions are also receiving Launch support. And healthcare workforce is such a need in this state.
Why don't we just set up for our next meeting, that we go up and tour?
That would be wonderful. I would love to be able to give a, a, a tour with our administrative team there.
It is an amazing facility up there. So Christie will help set that up.
Okay, great, great.
John?
No, I have nothing to add.
Well, President, welcome. I mean, I've, the rumor mills go around, and I haven't heard anything negative. That's always a great deal. I was excited when I saw that you was on our schedule for today and thankful that, all that you're doing and the positive that you brought to the university.
Well, thank you for your support. And again, when we work together, I think the communities that we serve, and I would look for the opportunity and forward to the opportunity to be able to work with the county, with you commissioners, to be able to, 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 to serve. I want Idaho State University to be engaged. So please, reach out anytime if there's questions that you have, needs that you have, and look forward to that next meeting then up at Eames.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to go or do you want to skip?
We can do the ratification real quick. This was the certificate, or the purchase of the vehicle for noxious weed. I signed it, it needed to be done, but it said we'd ratify my signature on that title. So just a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, remember, we ratified the signature on the purchase of the vehicle as presented.
Okay. How? Oh, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye. We're moving, we're moving.
Good morning, Commissioner. Pleasure to be with you on a Friday, no less.
Yes.
I have with me Bridger Morrison, Public Works Director with the City of Chubak. About a month, a month ago, Bridger reached out, reached out to me relative to how he could secure an easement on Bannock County property. And so I asked him to send me the pertinent information, which he did. I have placed it on the agenda for today. In the ever-changing times of communications and technology, they have a need for creating communications between that water tower and some of their monitoring system. There currently is a long, it's a ventureway, is that the new name?
Ventureways.
Long Ventureway, there is a power line that sits there. There is, I believe, a utility easement. I have not been able to locate that utility easement, but I will assume that it is there in perpetuity because that power line has existed for years upon years upon years. That said, this is a, a request to allow the City of Chubak, with Mr. Morrison taking care of all of the respective paperwork. He will return back to you with a legal description, a formal write-up, et cetera, granting that easement as he shows in his pictures, and then in a quick little delineated diagram I sent to you in your packet that just shows a 10, 10-foot, Bridger, is that what you need?
We actually haven't defined that.
Okay.
We just have a concern we would adjust that, but yes, 10 feet is pretty standard for some things.
I don't have any concerns with it.
When he did, when he mentioned to me that they would also do the construction for the conduit, conduits and the respective conductors that would be running through there, there's potential that they would disturb the existing landscaping, basically sod and sprinkler system, and they will basically repair that. We'll put them in contact with Scott at the Wellness Complex so that they can coordinate that work accordingly. Just here to start the formalities, Commissioner.
Yeah. Any questions? Move forward.
Real quickly, how long do you think it will take you to put your paperwork together? Okay. When we're finished, Commissioner, I'll have Bridger talk directly with Christie. He will not need to have me in attendance at that point, and he can just come back to you, and Christie can schedule his next, his next meeting to get signatures on the easement.
I'll work.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I just want to bring up one point really quick, and then Adam can finally leave. We took the Edward Byrne grant off simply because we might be exploring a different option. Adam wants to possibly apply for that grant, and we didn't want, the sheriff usually applies for that grant, and what we do is we get tough books, and then the City of Pocatello gets some items. The item that Adam needs is larger, and it would be a bigger benefit if we utilized that grant for his purposes, assuming it all fits. So we just need to do some more research, see how that's going to work. If this is going to be the path to go forward, then we'll find a way to purchase the tough books for the sheriff's office, or they would delay the purchase right here. So that's why we removed that. If you've got any questions on that, Adam can speak to us, but it will be coming before the board through the application process at a later time.
Yeah, basically, in talking with Iverson, they usually get $12,000 to $15,000 for the tough books. I spoke with Wes with the SHSP grants. We might be able to offset purchasing with that grant, rather, because he's got to use that money for law enforcement stuff. We usually buy radios with it. It might make more sense to buy some tough books for those guys because this is one of the first grants we've seen that interoperability radio is eligible for, and we need the Phase 2 stuff for our microwave tower. We still are a year out. We've got plenty of time to do it. I just want to go after it because even if they say no, it's worth a shot. It's, it's eligible. A lot of stuff, when we get these grants, are not 911-related or eligible. And because the State of Idaho has not adopted the FCC's new ruling on being able to pay for radio gear with 911, this grant, to me, looks very, you know.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, it would be great if we could get it because it's money we're going to have to spend eventually anyway. I'm just trying to find every avenue.
Well, that's kind of one of the things we've run into with the fire out here at Simplock is.
You're right.
Lack of radios.
Lack of communication. You could contact one person, and then it sounded like this should be a good deal.
Yeah, and, and it's something that's coming down the pipe eventually. I just want to explore every avenue to get the funding for it.
Do you have a tentative hold for these radios if you do that?
Well, actually, this would be to do the MPLS upgrade on our Ethernet. So we've already done Phase 1. In fact, that's probably coming up in Christie's ARPA update. We'll be done with that by end of November. That project will be complete, put to bed. There's a Phase 2 piece that includes these MPLS routers. We've actually been told by Motorola that we'll be able to function even without them, but it won't be ideal. So we need to get them eventually. We've still got a year plus before that's going to be a requirement. And even then, I think we'll be all right to function if we don't have it by that point a little farther out. But eventually, we need this equipment. So I'm trying to explore every avenue, simply, you know, trying to be fiscally responsible. And if we can afford it with state funding and not with county funding, it would be fantastic, so, or federal funding, I should say.
So anyways, that's why we took that off.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys. Thanks, Christie.
Let's, let's go ahead and take a recess for five minutes.